I'll call me the door. Davis, do you hear us? Davis? Davis, do you hear us? Are you there now?
I'm here.
Okay. I would like to convene as a Walworth County Land and zoning Board. Need a motion to approve the plot of John's second addition to Walworth County. Southeast, four, southeast four, Section twenty, T one twenty-three north, R seventy-six west, at the fifth PM, Walworth County, South Dakota. Now Davis, Jim, did you guys see this? This is that plot.
No.
This is that plot for, uh, if you have a little explain it a little more around it. Matt Morton's place, south of Selby. It's in front of Junction, Jim Davis, just to the west of Junction where you go to Mark Stickelwires.
Yeah.
Where Gil used to live.
And what did they want to do there?
Actually Oliver wants to build a house back to the north of the house that's there. Is what it really is. So they just, yeah, he owns all that land where the trees are, map does. And Oliver watches, take a little piece out of that. To go, to build a house.
Okay. Yeah. And that's in the media, media, do you want your requirement due?
Yes.
They talked to Gary about they're going to keep an easement for access and Oliver talked to Gary about providing another approach to the east of map and like it's, and Gary was in agreement with that, Gary will sign the plot. So, but they need to have the plot approved, so they have a legal agreement to write up their easement. Their easement there. So they, we just need to, uh, we just need to approve the plot, so that they can get their easement for access drawn up with John Rodwell.
Now, did you guys hear all that?
Yeah. I would know the move.
Davis, did you hear it?
I got it.
Okay. Okay, I got a motion on the floor, I need a second. I will second that. You got a second, any more discussion on that?
No, that's not acres, so he can, he's gonna start with the shop when eventually somebody orders on it. But it starts out to just be a shop for Oliver out there, but there's plenty of acreage to do that. No, he wouldn't give a bill for me because we didn't have a legal thing, but it means.
Anything else? You have none of all favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
What would say name? Motion passed. Is there any old business? New business? We got a motion on the floor to adjourn, I need a second.
I'll second.
Got a second. Any more discussion? You have none of all favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
What would say name, motion passed. Convene a Walworth County Board of Zoning Adjustment. Uh, discussion regarding request, request for a variance. Uh, Jim, do you want to explain that a little bit?
What we're asking for today is a variance for, um, a piece of plot land right north of the, um, Selby city limits along Highway twelve and eighty-three. Um, that's been sold and plotted out for Dollar General. And, uh, the county has a minimum acre requirement of two acres. The plot is only for one point four nine acres. Um, they filled out a variance request. What I, what I'm asking for today is permission to emphasize notice for a public hearing with variance, which will be held by April twenty-first.
Okay, did you guys both hear that, what this is?
Yeah. Yeah.
As far as I know. We can do it right during the quarter adjustment.
Question, I have a question regarding that, how are we gonna do it?
And also, here's, there's a little bit more involvedness, just to explain it. It's one point four nine acres included with the Selby city limits. There's an agreement between the city of Selby and Dollar General that it's going to be accessed or annexed, I'm sorry, annexed into the city. They just require a legal restriction to annex. So being it's in the county now, we have to approve the plot. So the city can, so the city again can have a legal restriction to annex. It will be annexed into the city before any construction ever starts.
But for a public hearing, I mean, until this is drawn, virus deals over with, I mean, they can't have a, they can't have a public hearing. How could we have?
Ten people, isn't there? I think.
I got a suggestion for you, can the city of Selby annex it in before they do, uh, before they do this, so then it doesn't fall under two acre. Why doesn't Selby get annexed in beforehand? So they don't even have to go through, uh, uh, two acre.
Yes, buddy.
Oh, yeah, I said a non-existent.
If it's our survey.
If surveyed, um, I would have to ask, the city would have to ask their attorney that if they could annex in something to be known as Selby Dollar General plot. Um, maybe that's a possibility.
And if you stay out of it, we don't have to worry about public hearing.
Annex in. But, and I'll, I'll tell you that they, what they said to Greg was, if we approve the plot on the twenty-first, approve the variance in the plot, then the city went, um, to the annexation on therapy on May eighth and according to dollars, the civil engineer, Dollar Engineer, that's the day dirt would start, construction would start that day. And so that's their pushing for it to hit middle date too.
Can we do the public hearing by phone? Or Skype or something on the computer?
Well, I would think that we could certainly do it by phone, um.
I truthfully believe we should have a public hearing for it, but I'm sure that works. Unless you figure out a way to do it like Jim is talking about. So I think there's a lot more people that would like to have that.
Or if they, uh, if they cause people to do it, there's a, they have various, we could do a public hearing.
No. We, we suggested that too.
Uh, we suggested that for them, so if you're two acres, your other half acre, then you don't need a variance to start off with in the first place.
I think that's gonna be our biggest challenge is to do a public hearing. And then if they could step out of their comfort zone by an extra half an acre or whatever to get us up to two acres, then we wouldn't have anything to do with it really.
We didn't get too deep into that, um, I don't know if, and I have no problem, I'll call, um, if, if the landlord wouldn't sell him two acres, I don't know, or if they just didn't, because I know that Greg directed them to the ordinance on the website, you know, Edit State, I'm in here. So I don't know if the landlord wouldn't sell him another half acre, I don't know. Um.
So the size of the door, most of the, would be material.
So I can talk to John and see if he can annex it again with a plot that's yet to be approved. And then the city would have to approve the plot and they don't care what size. Or we would have to delay the public hearing, or they would have to buy another half acre and have it be plotted for approval for that, is that kind of what our show seems to be.
That's how I would look at it too. Otherwise it just this. Over nineteen, by the time, you know, public hearing to speak of must, they would know that we were trying to do with.
And I think that's been sensitive, I'll try to get it stopped.
Hey, we just advertised a public hearing, can I do my phone? Call let me kind of this, otherwise if you're going to delay till after COVID nineteen, we might be talking about this in November.
Wow, I'm waiting, waiting there, Jim.
Sadly enough, he's not right.
Jim, do you agree with your options though?
Well, yeah, if, if they can, but, but that's just gonna push it down the, down the road another, another two weeks. They want to start in May. Uh, you know, by the time, by the time they, uh, contact, contact the landlord and he says no or whatever, you know, then, then they're gonna be back there next week.
One more thing I can figure then, and like you said, and we gotta sit and try to figure out how we could do it. By, yes, buddy.
It should always be set up a conference call, but the problem is it's already been, you know, petitioned paper and I, I don't know if we have time to get that. With that, so, because we're gonna run in notification, the number to dial in, and the conference call, I don't know if we have time. We could add that to, like, the next week, in the second week of the, of last we published. No, the last week.
Could, could you announce the variance hearing and do like you said, next week put in to the deal setup where conference calls through Zoom or whatever we use and announce the number to call in for that variance? And still, if we did that, uh, I guess my, my suggestion is let's pursue it that way. And if that works, find if, if they can go into the landlord and buy an extra half an acre and just eliminate the, we don't need to do along with the variance hearing.
I'll, I'll call John, see if they can annex again with the plot that hasn't been approved. If not, recall, Dollar, the civil engineer, he needs to increase it to two acres. Now because of the coronavirus, it now becomes a problem to, to have public hearing for. And I'd see what we go from there. Just remember, there's such a long path.
I would try to get to two acres at first.
There's some audio issues with the livestream, so that's why they're.
Yes, I think.
My suggestion is to, uh, try to give the two acres first, that's not gospel, I personally think they're gonna do it. I guess we can have a central phone number to, to this, call people. For the public hearing on that time, or something. If they don't have Skype or Zoom.
I wonder if we could do it like they did the, um, school landings. They had a number that, that just called into the state and then they did that way for all the school. I don't know how that's done either, but it must be a way to do it. So there were lots of people on the phone, you know, that day on the same, they just all, all in the same number. And then there was a call that should dial in to reach the landings, and so then they were all on the phone. But wow.
I, I would say we gotta look into for that, I mean, doesn't get done by the twenty, twenty-first, then I guess so be it.
Is, is there any way we could accept, or emails, comments on email to the auditor's office or to Jim's office or something, Greg, maybe?
You have to shake your head yes.
I would shake their emails and set up a public hearing.
I would think that would, that would be about as easy as anything.
I was just saying, if there's more things possible, it could be a lot easier to just have two acres.
And I'll check the world to.
So it's not, but it's gonna have to be, but we're gonna try and do, and if it's not done by then, it's not done by.
That's all we can, and I'll, I'll make that clear too. We'll advertise it for them, if we can't do it by then, then the public hearing just has to be canceled.
Well, do you have a way to do it?
Or, yeah.
Like Jim said, email or advertise probably.
I'll just make it clear with Dollar General that we're doing what we can. They're, they should be well aware that there's lots of things that are different right now. And we'll try and work with them as much as possible. But if you guys would just go ahead and buy another half acre, have a free plot and it's a done deal. And then the city, you can take the plot to the city, the city can annex it, the city can use it, the county's all of it.
I wouldn't show it to the block, I mean, it's a lot easier to prove.
There's no variance.
Don't have the variance on. I wouldn't have a problem with approving the plot without variance, but I do have a problem with approving the list.
Would it, Davis, Jim, do you agree with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, I will, um, call, uh, right at that.
All right, we're gonna go that route then.
We're not gonna advertise something different.
Yeah.
We're gonna advertise, okay, all right, that's what I thought.
And we'll figure out either, either way, unless in the meantime, they buy, buy another half acre.
There are ways you can get away from it before, with the, with the, with the users.
I'm, as soon as I'm done with the side of thing, I'll go and call the board. Let's see if I can figure out what you're asking. Is that what you're asking? I will see if I can do that right then.
All right, then we'll go back.
So, so.
Then we'll be able to, okay, I'll see what I can answer before we do that.
Anything else, Jim Davis on that?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Okay, discussion regarding the finalization of the Houston conditional use permit.
This morning, Jeremy Hartman brought in, um, a signed, a letter of assurance signed and notarized, um, signed by Maurice. And he also brought in the haul road agreement with those changes that we put in the last time we discussed it, that the, um, the road engineer wanted, they've reached all those. And that also, so the haul road agreement, the haul road agreement has been also signed by Maurice.
So then we just need the motion on each one of them.
I, I think the way you guys made the motion was that you were going to accept the conditional use permit contingent upon the haul road agreement and the other paperwork that they needed in and sign, which was the letter of assurance after signing haul road agreement, which we now have.
Gosh, Jamie here.
My understanding is that, what's, now the ball is in our court, and we don't pass a motion to approve conditional use permit based on these.
We don't really have something.
Isn't the haul road agreement part of the conditional use permit? So we just like to make a motion to approve the conditional use permit now, but can you, can we?
In all conditions, or?
We can motion for, um, on the haul road permit, we have on place of the highway department, Land and zoning, on the competition also to sign, can we get some kind of a motion to authorize those people to sign the haul road? So that I can just think that outside.
For signing this right now, you know.
Yes, also.
Let's make a motion to, just because it'll, it'll cost me here.
The letter of assurance, which is already signed and notarized by Maurice, um, also needs to be signed by the chairman of the board of justice, which gets, so we need signatures all around, and I think I would have an easier time getting everybody assigned.
Don't do it individual, most right, obviously, protect us. I will, I will make a motion for the chair first to sign the haul road agreement, and for the highway department to sign the haul road agreement for the justice.
Which has been signed by Maurice.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor, I need a second. I'll second, I have a second, any more discussion on that? Did you guys all, Jim Davis, did you hear that?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, then, uh, we'll do a roll call on that. Kevin?
Yes.
Marion?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Davis? Scott, yes. Motion passed.
Letter of assurance. Could Davis require in the conditional use permit?
I will make a, a motion to approve the chairman to sign, um, letter of assurance, which is already been signed and notarized by Maurice. For the special use.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor, I need a second. I'll second, I have a second, any more discussion on that? You have none of all favor, Kevin?
Yes.
Marion?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Davis? Scott, yes. Motion passed.
So just take care of all that. So, so I know what. To approve the conditional use with all the, I made a motion to approve the special use.
Condition?
Condition use permit in all the, did.
All the conditions?
All of the conditions have been, uh, approved.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor, I need a second.
I'll second.
I have a second. Any more discussion?
Maybe we don't have legal counsel, no, it's, we better get a lawyer to protect us.
We're just trying to get it.
Cover all of these.
Cover everything what happened here, David, just fucking.
Can you repeat that motion?
I just missed it, I think it's important.
Jimmy's important, Kevin, I repeat.
To approve the, the often conditional use, not that being all conditions have been, uh, conditional use, spinal waters.
Basically, you probably don't need that, we're just trying to.
Yeah.
Get everything. You got any questions, Davis?
No, I don't.
I'll roll call then, uh, Kevin?
Yes.
Marion?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Scott, yes. Motion passed. Any, uh, any old business? New business? Yeah, I got a motion on the floor to adjourn, I need a second.
I'll second.
I have a second, any more discussion? You have none of all favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
What would say name, motion passed. Convene a board of county commissioners?
Uh, I get the notification that, um, people cannot hear anyone but Scott and Jim. You guys can get closer to your microphone, please. And, um, Scott, are you able to turn, uh, your phone up so Davis is louder?
I tried to turn it up, but for some reason it came, you wanted to go from the side, I don't know. You said, oh, damn. Volume on your phone. It's actually. Yeah. Uh, you, you want to turn your volume up or?
Davis? Can you hear us, Davis?
Yeah, I can hear.
Can you, uh, you wanna call my cell phone number, Davis? For some reason, your, the speaker isn't coming in on, on Scott's very well. Okay. Eight four eight, one nine three two.
One nine three two?
Yep. Okay, thanks.
Now you're just gonna get all the phone calls from everybody. Right, it's yours, it's mine.
Hey, Davis, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Try this. Yep, yep, we're good. Need a most approved agenda? Got a head some?
Just protecting yourself. Cause there is, uh, one spot on here.
I'll put another twenty, twenty. Put another just a twenty-three. Anything else? Yes.
We need to add to the agenda, uh, probationary in case for Parker Blum. Now, when you remove number eighteen, table that until next day.
No, but that rather than at least, uh, the condition is. Did you guys hear that about removing eighteen?
Yep.
Yep, we're removing. Okay.
And then we're adding.
We're removing, yeah.
Right, and then we're adding for a Parker Blum for a probationary raise. Yeah. Anything else?
I have a motion to approve the.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor. I need a second.
I'll second.
Need a second. Any more discussion? Hear none, all favorites say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All who say nay, motion passed. Number four, number five. Number fourteen, I don't know if you guys have all had a chance, but, uh, he's got a motion to approve the minutes for March seventeenth, twenty twenty. If you all had a chance to look at him and go through them.
I will.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor. I need a second.
I'll second.
Got a second. Any more discussion on that? Hear none, all favorites say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All who say nay, motion passed. Need motion to approve claims repaid. You guys all had a chance to go over them.
Was there any more added this morning that we didn't get, David, tonight?
No.
Okay. I would.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor. I need a second.
I'll second.
There you go, a second. Any more discussion? Hear none, all favorites say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All who say nay, motion passed. Okay, we're going number sixteen.
Um, so kind of like the board has been here to just kind of have this session, I guess, um, but, um, you know, from the last time we invited, I just want to bring the attention that I think, or kind of even start to see that people are shifting and starting to actually keep their socialistics a little bit more, but there's definitely, um, subtle people just like everywhere in the state that are not following my rules. They're going a little bit like this norm. Um, but this is another thing that I want to bring to attention is, um, obviously, I've been thinking about it and talking about it as you're coming up and your graduations coming up, um, and things like that. So there has been talk about different things, um, in communities and how they're trying to get people to come together in the group so that they can, um, you know, celebrate these things and, um, but in their vehicles, it's kind of how they're trying to do it. Um, I know it was brought up to me, um, about in Mulbridge, we have the, the, I mean, Loopy Meter. Um, and basically talk about, you know, churches, like contacting them to try to do services for Easter and things. Um, they should talk about people's graduations out there, um. So I kind of, I, I talked to the state production coordinator. They had to say, hey, this is thing, this is thing, this is our party, discussions are happening, uh, what the store came in and they're. But, uh, he had said that several, uh, churches and groups are actually starting to, they've already started to do this, um, in Aberdeen where, um, you know, people show up from the parking lot at churches, um, and they have their service with really certain rules that, you know, you can't get out of your vehicles and they're a little, little, uh, um, and they make their broadcasting and do their radio. Just because it's really important at these times, cause this is going to be a long, stretched out event, um, that you still have to have somewhat, um, just for morale, that togetherness, you know, kind of, I don't know, to keep, to keep people at bay from maybe wandering off. It is, it is important to have that, that togetherness, um, you know, for churches, for, for graduations, um, and other groups like that. Um, and he said that he actually had been encouraging as always, you must follow the rules. Uh, so I think I have mixed feelings on it because I really, I see that, um, morale boost, that people need the social interaction people need. Um, but at the same time, there's that temptation for you, where you have that togetherness and these people I haven't seen for a while, they're all things, people might be apt to, you know, get out of their vehicles if somebody or they're going to shoot something like that. So I can see those sides of the world. So just to bring to your guys' attention, there's, you know, things like that in the works, um. I have seen some churches in Mulbridge where they are starting to come out with cars and having church services and starting people having following the rules and keeping their social distancing and things like that. Um, so I'm not saying that, but I just feel for thought, like things that are kind of going on.
Who would monitor out there with movies here and you smell smoke, you get a lot of cars there. How is your lot? Who would monitor?
I don't know. I was speaking with James this morning, um, until the city, two of the cities ordinance that they passed, it puts a one mile per day, so there's nothing that we can decide we want to matter, let's discuss, but about the city. So we can discuss any time.
My first opinion would be, how would you monitor? I mean, you would see a lot of cars out there.
Yeah, I don't know. That's my whole thing is that, you know, you're going to start and, and it's even in press conferences that you see that they're talking about over here, watching it or not and stuff. You know, be innovative. I'm all the solutions. It's, um, it's breaking down those events. Things like that, but still really be, you know, cautious, make sure that that's something, that everybody doesn't know why, that everything is really this. You know, so, um, I know some bits are coming up and, and things are happening here, um.
I understand, I don't see a problem with it because you take a look at all these other schools, you just announce it, most school teachers are having parades. Uh, schools are having parades. You're gonna be able to get out, we're not gonna be able to live in a class bubble for the next year.
But I agree with you. I think that it is good. I mean, I would definitely, you know, lean towards stuff to doing things like that, for sure.
We're gonna have a lot more problems in this area coming out real quick. That we're hoping out right now, just because the river is on the block now. How many people are gonna be coming out, getting out? Houses in the suburbs, Casco.
We're already seeing.
All that, all up and down the river. That are from Minnesota, Iowa, Arizona. Everywhere.
And that's the big thing that we, you know, we have been in meetings and stuff talking about is that, you know, there is, there is several, obviously, licensed units actually in the areas on that. And we're already, there are campers on the campground. There's already, um, I mean, there's already people on the campground.
You say, you know, open campground, if you know.
I haven't heard that yet, but I, like I said, I do know that there are campers that are forming up and giving free things. Um, so I haven't actually wondered what they're going to be doing. Um, you know, like in Mulridge, um, they set to, you know, like the, the city parks and the lake, the lake parks, things like that. So they, so Mulridge has started to put, you know, several things in place. It's just had. But other than that, I mean, they're just more of a, we have it, so it gives us a lot. If you guys have any questions or?
My opinion in the first case, it's forward county. I think you're gonna see a little difference. Maybe we could not take that out.
And that's a, that's a special that we said, you guys have been from, we met two other nine, they were, um, you know, they said that once they have their first case, they're going to speak shit. And the thing that we have to remember too is that you really have to, um, as we do our part, you really have to stay up on the facts and based on the law of the year. Um, and that's what we're, kind of, we actually say, I mean, this is kind of, you know, the media, the, you, you play it, but it's natural, um, and that's the thing that we value here is it's just that square, this is nasty. I mean, it's, yeah, you're finding something you can't see and it's very, very, and you can't, and you're, you're not practicing, you're going to go to the CDC site and the Department of Health site and they're, 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 they're running back.
I understand, but there's a big difference in the CDC and New York City than there is in Mulridge County, South Dakota.
Definitely, but it's still, I, I, you know, I think it's.
I understand there's a difference.
Yep, there is. What's working in, in Aberdeen might not work for us. What's working in New York is might not work for us. What works for us might not work for New York. A very ruined situation. We have to do a special, ask how we, for us. And that's why I said, you know, what's going on in the media and everything. It doesn't, it doesn't mean that that's going to happen here. It doesn't mean that's what you got, kind of just sitting in the door and it isn't.
According to the governor, she says that it's all up to individual basis to monitor yourself, so. As far as I know, there's no cautious, there any fines or anything if somebody gets caught shaking somebody's hand out on the street or? Yeah, I mean, it's still an individual basis.
They all mandated no sheltered place in the name of office. She was part of the same conference hall. You know, it's maybe not a, like, but it's a certain age group. That's the only place that she, the governor made a mandatory. She doesn't, she don't, you know, she's, she's putting it on the, on the citizen team. People socially, it's like, and, and bringing it up to local jurisdiction to, you know, let, you know, people.
To answer the question, we'll call it home. She left it up to business owners to, to, to be open on their own if they want or that was the latest deal I see, businesses can remain open. So it was on TVs.
It's more common sense to me, but it really is. It's all common sense.
That's all I had, which is kind of.
Is there any more deals from the state? Last summer, it was supposed to be just till April thirtieth. It's coming up here, we're halfway through. I think I'm extending it out until June or November or November.
You know, there's another press conference today, the, I believe. But options will be making some more announcements and discussions today. Um, it was yesterday and she closed all schools for the rest of the school year. So I think what you're gonna see is, um, you know, I can't say what she's gonna do, but since it's such a ruined situation, like she said, it changes hour to hour. Um, so what they decide today, what yesterday could change, maybe could change today. Um, but, you know, they're really projecting with the teeth of this and something, but it isn't going to happen. And today would maybe be the June.
Could change that.
Could change. Well, she keeps saying that, but then there are also projections that it might go into August. If, if the number, but that's just how the numbers are, are traveling. It depends on what the numbers show today. I feel it depends on whether the numbers show tomorrow, um, and how it shifts and how we're seeing, you know, community spread going on. Um, and where new cases are popping up. Um, and so as of right now, you know, they're saying in the May, beginning of June, possibly into August, you know, she had said, uh, there's a big question, why do you still feel like shut down? Shop their Apple plates. What's that does though is, uh, it extends that, you kind of, to, and the, the projections were, you know, the end of October. And.
If you shut the businesses down, I mean, everybody is broke by the first of May. Gosh, you're gonna be busier now. I guarantee you, you're gonna be busy. Cause all the businesses are shut down now, uh, majority of businesses. There's a lot of businesses that are hurting real bad. And if people are that bad off, you're, you're gonna get busier. You're the first one that's gonna get busy.
We have the prediction of what, two hundred, about two hundred and sixty thousand people in South Dakota, we have uh, is near. The first one, six hundred thousand. That's three forty, South Dakota. You know?
Yeah, it's just gonna have to, it's, it's gonna change, it's gonna change. It sounds like everybody just keeps feeling their part and trying to make it, just, because the goal is just to slow that growth down because every day, you know, Wal County doesn't have a case, it's a day closer to vaccine. Every day closer, you know, to hopefully, you know, as they figure out. So that's the one where it's very, very. If I knew that is, I'd be concerned with this again, watching all that, it's really a challenge.
Thanks, Amanda. Uh, I put the other on about the discussion regarding, uh, employee rotation COVID nineteen. What we did is we had a meeting with all the heads and, uh, we decided on, you know, not having everybody in that office. And it would just be a rotation where one would go home for a week. And then we rotate back so that hopefully, when it does happen, that everybody in that office would not be, would get it in. And then the office would close. That's the reasoning for doing that. Anybody got any questions on that? Just like how it's been since, so. You call in, just, just like it's been, just call in and make an appointment. Each office is handling it back. Just call that office and, and go for that. If nobody has a question, we move on to seventeen. Consider the motion to rescind the recommendation of Dave, I'll say wrong, the January. Need a motion for that?
I know.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor. Need a second? Got a second. Any more discussion on that?
I didn't know if you guys wanted to read this letter or not, so.
Here's a letter from Dave. It's because of COVID nineteen, I decided to ask for my job back because I could not move to Washington state because of it. David. Hopefully, he's safe for years. Any other discussion? Hear me on all the favors, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. The, uh, consider votes approved the five of John, seventh edition of Walworth County. Southeast four, southeast four, section twenty, T one twenty-three north. Are seventy-six west of the fifth P M O, that was sound. I take a motion for that? You got a motion on the floor? I need a second.
A second.
Got a second. Any more discussion on that? Hear none, all a favor, say aye.
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 Motion passed. Okay, number twenty, consider both the point drainage board. You're just the county commissioners. I just need a motion for that.
I do.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor. I need a second. Got a second. Any more discussion on that?
What exactly this is more gonna be responsible for?
You want to touch a little bit on that, do you?
Any drainage issues would be here, that's. What authority do we have to, to drain anything or to stop somebody draining into this county? Another, another county wants to drain something and it comes into this county, what authority do we have to stop? Do you, do you represent the evidence of legality of what it being a drainage board? Do we have the authority to do anything or are we just state a sounding board for the county? About latter thing, I don't know. Other thought, we don't have the authority to drain anything. Also, ours is a sounding board. Yes.
Um, Greg and I talked to ECOG concerning this. ECOG is in no way, in a, anywhere in state and will not be with any drainage for issues. But Greg has found, um, quite a bit of information from counties that have drainage boards. And there are methods and there are ordinances that we think we have promised to surprise them in the life. Okay. I can give you out what we have and he'll continue to watch, to give us some kind of guidance. Right, like this drainage board, we did check with ECOG and they know that it, um, it don't pay rent this day. So I can, do you know what drainage sounds like, or?
I don't know if us being drainage board is, but if we have no authority or anything, all in our sounding board. Really, what, what value is there to have a drainage board to begin with?
I think it's just gonna take some research on what our, what our job is gonna be there. Go away from there.
We're, we're not a board of people or, or, or water. Uh, and anything where, and, uh, I just, I would get, and, uh, I'd be, I'd be, I'd be, you know, five per for that. Uh, if that is, if that is the case, uh, we have no, like, by, from the, it's. In the situation like, you know, I certainly, um, I'm big and on outside the, my voluntary, but not, or maybe, except for, I mean, that stuff. But it's not likely, or that, uh, the drainage now, construction, uh, will probably be, um, pretty, you know, working down the road. Yeah, those many drains probably unpack, uh, probably gradeways, except, it's actually on the roadway. Um, by any means. This happens. I heard you people would, but, um, I just don't see that, like, you know, you would.
To me, but it's gotta be, what out there is that nobody can just go. You really should not be able to drain, like, some, or to hurt other people. I mean, it, I mean, that's just, other than county stands, but this, that's what we're, we're happy with.
Um, so this drainage board would be the commission? Yes, two points. My question then is, why do we need a drainage board if the commission is made to, because we currently are going to hear that stuff anyway, right?
You mentioned one of the other ones in the little loops you got to do.
I think it's a little too, board adjustment and zoning and so on, or you have, you have almost, I don't know if they would be called an ordinance or a resolution drawn up to tell you what your authority is and, you know. So I think that has to be a separate board. Just, just like zoning and zoning and, um, board adjustment.
To me, it would make, seems to me like it would make a lot of sense to have, you know, you know, use sort of Mr. Bachman. That deals with a lot of that stuff. Dennis on a data via basis, it would make a lot of sense to have him on that board.
I'm my dollars with, with, uh, uh.
Dennis Bachman.
I guess as he can.
I mean, determining the need for. Let me hear you. I mean, determining the need for a drainage board. Uh, this comes about by drainage issues that have occurred in Walworth County and the racial race range in the prolonged time. Uh, and, uh, prominent attorney, and you need, you know, a, a hostile important visitor for Walworth County to have a season drainage board. Uh, he was involved in a lot of litigation in Deacon County and he felt it was cheap. Uh, you people, uh, you're not, you're not really a regulating board, uh, but it's an important factor to have in government. Uh, and when I, when I talked to Dennis, uh, I, I think how it's supposed to be set up is a minimum of one commissioner and a season on the drainage board. Uh, so the dialogue got to the point where Killa, or the board of directors with the NRCS willing to be the drainage board. Uh, the one county commissioner, uh, would be active on, on behalf of the county. Uh, the only comment I received back is that, uh, it, it's not the best stimulus to have the NRCS board of directors act as a drainage board. Uh, so basically they, they were looking at, uh, the, the board of directors at the NRCS is, is, uh, not funding. It's a voluntary deal. And, uh, if the board of directors, uh, would choose to be on the drainage board, uh, they're going, they do it for compensation. Uh, if all the drainage issues go right to the board, uh, it could be done unconsuming. And, uh, they were looking at how to be, how to be participated in funding for their, for their activities, so. In your standard of technicality, uh, I, I think it's important and I like the fact that, uh, the five county commissioners would be the drainage board. In the event that, that, uh, we might be in a position where we have to be starting emergency, we've got, uh, given to you. Uh, if you establish a resolution, uh, the resolution could include, uh, some effect that, uh, no drainage, uh, no landfill. Uh, opening up drainage channels, dredging, uh, until this whole finish. We're suffering some pretty serious things right now and, and if somebody just determined that, that I, if I open my, my approach up, I can drain upon, and I hope to think that we listen because they're gonna pick up another house to make their land. Uh, if it's an emergency situation or, uh, basement flooding or something like that, uh, it's conceivable. But, uh, if we're all, uh, determining potential like elevations on the, on the safety side to do drainage, to accommodate the projected, uh, like elevation. Uh, if we do all that, then automatically somewhere you hear a bit, I wanna dump this. Uh, now all of our research and data has been released. But with no authority, what good is board gonna do?
I don't have a problem in doing it, but I, my only thing is before we jump into this and say that we're gonna be a drainage board, I'd like to have a little guidance, uh, what, what scope is gonna cover and what authority we're gonna have to do it. We need resolutions to get placed for us to follow or what are we? We're just gonna be a sounding block. And that's fine, I guess, you can get that as a mission too. We're gonna hear the same things as a commissioner, as we are, as a drainage board. Unless we have some guidance sent in there to say, anytime that there's anything going on, we have to give approval for that.
Well, to me, I think that's what's going on right anyhow, but I think we have to learn exactly all the responsibility that if we don't set the word, why would we need to look into the, what we gotta learn? To me, that one makes sense that you're gonna, now we got some other things to learn. But I mean, if you're not, if you don't have a board, why would somebody that's not on a board, why would they wanna research?
Unless this, uh, work, we put the artificial resources.
I'd say right now, it's, 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 it's serious time.
I know, it's very exciting, but I don't have a problem in doing it. Need some guidance somewhere.
This, this thing that comes about, uh, it was discussed of the, the neighboring counties that, that, uh, so, somebody privately may post to the county commissioner to get drainage board, that would resolve. Or make comments to the A or N A on, uh, you're dealing with wetland, you're draining the wetland. And, uh, and so it is, I feel it's important that we have these recognized and that we have a name. Uh, there probably is one of the records, but, uh, and this would be helping me of somebody to get cause if we would have spent some time really just to go back through the entire, uh, record system with the county commission action from day one. Uh, and then lay it out, the county commissioners, this was merely an attempt to, uh, to revisit that I felt the Walworth County Commission was a drainage board. And this, that action has merely defined that, yes, the Walworth County Commission is a drainage board.
I, I have no problem, and I honestly think that if we had a drainage board, there's a lot of issues from hidden board that we could have resolved with that.
You're true, Calvin, that, uh, what separates the county commission from the drainage board, but at least that you're right, that, uh, your position includes drainage.
That's right, as long as we get an doctor of what, what authority we have and what we need to do to enforce it. That's my opinion. I don't know what the rest of you guys say about it, but.
Yes, um, would we have to, Scott, I'm considering a motion, there's plenty of drainage board. Would we have to set up an ordinance or set up some type of a, what we call zoning board or whatever? That we would be basically following down the same order that we're going down our, our current agenda, where we go into the Walworth zoning and then we go out of the that into the board of zoning adjustment, would we go into a board of drainage? Then, then we'd have to have some ordinance set up to do this, or? What's the?
Why don't we just get the zoning board, get that type part done? And then look at the stuff that then is finding something on the county. On how they're handling drainage. It's gotta be, I mean, that would have to be around forever. Just so you need for years. They just got pushed by the wayside.
We're gonna have to have a dust board when that gets dried up too, or?
That's all that in. If we were just wanting to.
How, I would, if, why wouldn't we just look into why there is counties that have a drainage board? If you were to come, well, if right down to it, it's been against commissioners regardless. Commissioners are gonna make the last say so. So I, I guess I'm not, I'm not following the.
I, I would say, I would have a problem with that. He'll come on some table and tell us more information. That's what. Set a board now with no authority or no guidance or anything.
Jim, what do you think?
I, I, I would like to know what our, sort of speak job description would be, you know, uh, I don't think I'm qualified to go up there by, like most didn't tell somebody whether they can drain a wetland or whether they shouldn't or, you know, I just don't feel I'm qualified to do that. So. I guess I would like to see, kind of, on what Dennis said, what is gonna be our job description? What, what do we need to know before we step into that model?
That's my, that was my point, Jim, in that thinking with the whole thing with Mr. Bachman and I, and we agree with Scott, but maybe he's had, doesn't have the ability, he would be on that board. But, uh, I mean, he would be somebody that would be a whole lot more qualified in knowing the drainage, uh, natural drainage systems and everything else that were there. Um, that would have a whole lot more ability to point out the fact that, well, this is where it's gonna go to if it rains and where, and all this stuff. I, I guess that, that's some of my concern with it too.
Yeah, I don't know, like Scott says, if Dennis could do that B and C and not, they're unlikely to hold people or someone you could hold accountable.
I, I would, Dennis would do it. I think you could call him and he'd say no.
I know, I would say if I was an issue.
No.
Yeah.
So no matter how you look at it, when it often comes down to it, then I can see it, it's gonna go back to the county commission.
I would, yeah.
No matter what, what happens, it's gonna go to the county commission. So to me, if we're, if we're a drainage board slash county commissioner, I'm pretty sure it's gonna be the same thing.
Yeah.
So we got a motion. And a second. What do you guys wanna do then? So we got a motion and a second, what do you guys wanna do then?
Well, kind of like we just said Scott, if we're not going to have a drainage board, why aren't we gonna waste the time to look into what our job description is? I you know, I don't know just how to do that, which way are you gonna get the card before the orange or the? I I guess so. If you if if we appoint the commission as a drainage board, drainage board, which we're gonna need, you know, then we're gonna have to find out what our what our job is.
Right. I mean, to me, I mean, this this is not a this is not something I did, it it's not what we can worry about in two weeks or a month. This is this is happening daily, I don't think they got to say that to anybody. Everyone is are well aware of what's going on in right now.
Yeah.
And to me, when it boils down to it, I guess if if the if the we need to have that little title that says drainage board and it is the commission, then I I feel that then that's exactly what we need to do then. And 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 yes, I I think it might be backwards in normal situations, but I I think we have to do that now and then do our research. It might be backwards, but.
Maybe if I could ask Scott, uh in reality, uh I think that you could be adjusting the motion that uh you appoint yourselves uh have members of the drainage board with oversight boards. Because uh their permits authorized by by the inner CS to all the uh merely, you got input on uh on when those permits are applied for and looking at that. So these permits really have come through us? No, they go through the inner CS.
That gets back to my.
Why you want to have your position with oversight?
We have no authority to do anything.
But the public needs somebody to go through the complaint. I understand.
That's why you want the board developing permission.
I I understand what's different if I get a call on water drainage board, you know, just get it all fall under the same umbrella. So we have an extra title in back of there that we have no authority to do anything on what gives that title. Without any authority.
Well, my guess is we do some research on it and say that.
That's fine. Maybe we can we could go ahead and set it up and then try to see what we can what authority we can get. Maybe we can be included in the parts of approval for the drainage through the inner CS, I don't know.
Got a motion on the floor and a second. I'm gonna go call on that. Kevin? Yes. Mary?
Um. I'm gonna say no, just because the it doesn't seem to make any difference, so I agree with Kevin and not if or or commission, I already got the responsibility and either we fall it either it falls under the planning and zoning board where that's for we have a little bit more control or right now until we find out where it's really falling, I'm I'm gonna say no.
Jim?
Yeah.
Davis?
Yes.
Scott, yes. Motion that.
Say we might look at it out there and figure out what we can do after.
Just here. So I need a motion to approve that hydrology study on D three M G M with K O J engineering. I need a motion for that. Okay, I got a motion on the floor, I need a second.
Okay.
Got a second, any more discussion on that?
How far does that actually extend up? The original email. Cost estimate from B L G without exceeding four thousand dollars, uh that was intended to be a localized hydrology study, but just the what it applies outside the blue line. Uh the original estimate was four thousand dollars not to exceed, uh with the consideration for sentiments, uh K L J determined that that they'd like to expand the hydrology study to a blue light at length since it is a basic body of water for that's in the event that would be trying to go. Uh the cost estimate always was just tolerated. Uh so it's it's going up. Uh I I asked Adam, I informed Adam if this is a live stream, uh he's with K L G and hopefully he's listening, but uh with the concerns, uh they want to expand the hydrology studies to include food, food like at length, so that the water quality and the water quantities, uh they'll determine what kind of an impact it has on the light that's on the rise and uh it's getting real serious. And so with your approval of this, uh you're giving them a go ahead to uh come up with an option, uh can we drain it, uh what's the environmental impact of draining it, uh I didn't explain it all, but that's a perspective at least. We'll get into that. Let's go through this little stuff. The unit of operations, the unit of maintenance.
Any other discussion on that?
Yes, this uh motion that we have on the floor and on this hydrology study, we're basically deciding whether we're gonna go instead of spending four thousand, we're gonna spend fourteen thousand.
Right.
And with the situation that are occurring, uh that's like as far as I as far as I'm concerned, no state will. There's a possibility that if we're going to drive to the point of Tracy and uh the emergency access road that's west of Moses and DC town, if we can't keep up with it, uh there's a possibility that then we plant and uh bring that road on the water, uh with the case such that uh we have probably lost uh consolidation with county about five days and went on the county line, uh because of the number of hours and we just moved it from there. It's getting real serious, uh I kinda wanna elaborate on that, uh I asked, that's why I asked for this to be a live stream, uh so hopefully the public is listening and uh and making it aware of how serious issues we have personally, so.
Any other discussion on that?
I'm gonna go on Scott, but uh I think you you can refer to Scott Brown and I think K L G, I don't think that's I continue with.
Yeah, I'll go vote, vote on Kevin.
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes. What's the path?
Let's make this next item simple, just authorize it. So let's not demand the authorization, but authorize it, then we look to me as far as.
Talk about this, this this advertised for one full time and two part time for the highway department?
Yes. Can I ask what's your reasons for this is? Any luck jobs are leaving you? Instead of just leaving it up to you, because I know how that worked out last time. Without getting in the name or anything and then just throw that out there, do you got an idea of what these people are gonna be doing? So Kevin, where are you drawing first, but I'm just asking you a question. And the intent is, I was uh it was more than I can handle, was we have to start building vehicles who have been going out before, uh with the possibility, there's journalists coming shortly, we gotta start somewhere, you understand this? And uh believe me, with the conditions we're in now, uh I am researching day labor. Uh some people question day labor, uh I I have uh discussed with legislative bias, I brought the term up, uh legislative bias, I refer you to the federal uh labor department, uh the federal labor department, we needed day labor is legal. Uh we we did a good first showing estimation on that building demolition. Uh the person was hired as specialized drags, uh when he was done, and the and the uh uh the neighbor remarked that what can you pay labor on specialized equipment to run a scraper that they're running for all our county for agents? Same situation, uh if you're an experienced scraper or operator, uh the board determined the rate which we did, but showing estimation, uh some of that drainage is some rate determination. Do you what does day labor have to do with it in full time and do part time? I'd be looking at more day labor compared to all the part time. If you're asking for the part time stuff, uh uh I've given a lot of consideration to that contract for service information that we uh feel that they put together and I'm looking at the possibility of bringing the contractors in, but it's a stage in the game of possibility. So uh this is generally do uh yeah, I have a point to start. Building a future of the counties.
But dude, you don't even have your budget for a full time.
I would like to say uh the budget, that's what you can currently, uh the budget uh presented for rest of year twenty twenty and for that one or two part times.
Two part times.
And thirty percent increase in overtime, I believe.
Hey, let's excuse me.
Somebody. So thirty thirty percent increase in overtime for the one full time, twenty with benefits. Do you remember was that default time in place?
Well, you have two part time that was approved and have four.
Now, does it any fall into one of your part time?
More first blood. Yes, and uh Kenny is probably getting to the point where uh we have to let it go based on this six months of service. And uh one of the elected guys, Kenny is still employed because he has eight thousand from one area and uh she is providing that service for him. And uh it's been paid for by the administration of uh that's that's the subletment for the investment. I I understand my whole for all looking for the future. Like I just just I just threw it out there, what are you looking to do? And instead of anything else, you bring up day labor, which wouldn't qualify if it was either part time or full time, so. My my thoughts were directed, you guys approved of this and just in the upper, uh to determine day labor, uh maybe I wouldn't, but at least I'm not the. Uh with all due respect, I would prefer, if you got a problem, you can use it. Based on the first blood. I'm just asking a question.
The overtime cloud violation, that came out thirty six thousand.
It was thirty six thousand versus sixty thousand per full time worth of, on average, that's probably a figure of sixty thousand one full time with benefits. We're gonna have that right now. I haven't Davis, I'm just just saying, without the budget, what do we do? I understand the roads are are crap, you're gonna get into a lot of other things out there, you might need these people. I understand that. Really come up with the extra money to do. Where are we gonna come up with the extra money to pay the contractors? Cause it's open beyond their equipment rates and all that. Like I said, I'm gonna be willing to have department. There's a problem with your running, I would run them one quick time. I think Scott and I have talked about uh a host of things. Uh uh with the magnitude, um I wanna say on average about seventy five phone calls on our personal cell phone and the benefits. It's near me corresponding with state officials, corresponding with residents or just basically taking comments from public, uh and this isn't the time or the place to talk about it, but since uh we're there pushing that way, uh the situation, maybe uh maybe, and I wanna say it again, maybe, uh the department's good book is uh the operator release and we have a whole man employed and it comes with a company. You gotta force me on that comment.
Um just a question, I guess, do we have to approve this if we've already approved the budget and you already got two part time in it? Like you part time. Did one approve the benefit for me? One of the part time employees is still on staff, like I said, for reaching back, that's why I don't wear now that's today, or if you're still, then you're looking at the COVID department. Agreed?
It depends on the presentation, yes.
That is, that is such a luxury, uh to have any of that. Uh periodically, uh it's uh it's been a drainage process, uh and with the experience to do stuff, uh that's invaluable, although on the COVID nineteen thing, uh what if uh what if P D S done a great job? Although on the COVID nineteen thing, uh, what if, uh, what if any of us done a great job on social segregation? Uh, separation? And what if the highway department comes down with, now you've got somebody with experience to come in and, uh, and take, uh, same thing back. And that's just a comment, but, uh, it's a emotional thought and whatever.
Jim Davis, do you have anything to say?
No, I would kind of, I would certainly support Gary on this deal. We, we need, uh, and I've said this many times, we need to sit down and we need to take a pint of truth in this county. Instead of, seems like we're always reacting. In the aftermath, Mark.
Um, we've gotten, uh, many years ago, uh, the gravel truck drivers were first in the fight. Uh, the gravel truck drivers, and I'm looking for that process going, uh, and I'm not gonna say this is part-time people, but, uh, really Friday, Saturday. Uh, I wouldn't really endorse working on Sundays. But if the side is in, let's see, if you're thinking of a certain place, uh, the part-time people put a winter roll gravel on the road. And, uh, it's there for the bigger operator on Monday morning. So, I know. And I could be day laborer.
Anything else with this?
Definitely, Gary knows what you're still, I support it.
Well, I'll need a motion for that.
I would still move.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor, I need a second.
I'll check that.
I need a second. I don't need more discussion. Here's another little call on Kevin. No. Marion.
I guess I'm, uh, I'm gonna say no in the fact that I think we have been in the budget just for two part-time, uh, employees.
Jim?
Yeah.
Davis?
Yeah.
Well, I guess I'm looking at a full-time person too. I mean, I know we got, uh, two part-times in the budget, I'm worried about the budget. I know what Gary's saying, what are we gonna do? I think we tried to get this wrong, we should have acted far from the part-time and in the part-time.
I was just wondering, isn't our assistant department have responsibilities to keep within our budget?
I guess I'm gonna vote no because I, the, the, the full-time person is the only reason why I am. Believe me that we need, we need to do the part-time employees. That's probably should have pressed it back, not both together. Motion to. And I believe Marion is right, two part-times have already been booked. But even though you sort of roust him, I think it was, it was for my employees.
I just don't understand, some departments can just hire whoever they want, others can't.
Uh, full-time, uh.
They only get approved two part-times, I believe, but.
I, I believe we need approval for the part-time.
But then we go, they're hiring for, wait, so many people that we, they don't even come on the agenda. Whether you, it's not, you're seeing our budget, you can, you can, maybe reduce, uh, different costs. Maybe we, we can just reduce repairs if we have another employee, I mean, I just, I don't like, I mean.
But, no, I know Gary's right in saying, not you run the highway department. So, like I said, you've got the budget, I mean.
But Doc?
Yes.
We have to create position for the extra full-time in my mind. We got the position on the books for the two part-time, but we have to, we have to create that position for the extra full-time. Right?
What information?
Whether it's in the budget or not, we still have to create that position. The same as we did with the highway secretary. We have to create that position. Whether we funded or not, it's a different story, but before, when you do anything, we have to create that position.
But don't you agree, I mean, the two, we voted on two part-time, I mean, that was already approved already, Jim.
Well, the two part-time positions, and I don't have that in front of me, but the two part-time positions, we've already created. Right? And maybe that two part-time for, for many years, but to add one more full-time, we have to create that position. And then we have to fund it.
Which we didn't do though.
Which we got, which we, we've gotta create that position.
For those.
I, if Gary, you gotta say eight full-time people, and he wants another one, we have gotta create that position to give him nine full-time people.
And we'll move on, consider most for a joint power agreement for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, and in April twenty twenty-two, the game official. I'll take a motion for that. Great, I'm saying, uh, let's spread, uh, and, uh, if you agree. And this, this agreement, this, this plan, this agreement is really, because of that. If they want somebody to run, uh, the, the, the department. There you go. Provide the service by, uh, agreement, that, that is an option. But now it's right, I would just agree with him for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, and in June, April, twenty twenty-two. Okay, you got a motion on the floor, I need a second.
Yes, I'll take it.
Okay, you got a second, any more discussion on that? Just the maintenance. If you have none, all favorites, say aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Post say name, motion passed. If we present surplus equipment, small items list for the highway department for approval.
I provided that via, uh, our topic. Uh, that was a list that we put together, if you remember, uh, we were planning, uh, consolidated, uh, there were options, uh, there's been a few parties interested. Uh, this is just for us. And, uh, I wanna kind of elaborate the first item, uh, in two thousand eight, kind of, from a challenge on the tractor. Uh, I agree with you, Dr. Doctor, with Thomas. I think it's our best interest to, 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 and it still lives on with the potential value of it. Uh, so. I think that's, uh, the main item. If you wanna start with that, if you wanna go through the list first. Uh, that is the list, and we do have a lead board pick-up on there, and we do have a share of start. Uh, there are some teams in those departments who, uh, overall. I've been talking with, uh, the government county, and I agree with the staff, that when, uh, we're gonna do this, what's in? Uh, do we, uh, move forward with this, not other members, they have more tractor on surplus, so.
My opinion, I think that's the one we should do, is just that tractor. I don't care, you see, you still got it on here, that nineteen eighty-one? Yes. Do you still think, I don't think we need to do nothing now, that's my opinion, but do you really think that that would be our, you just, you can do that too?
I, I agree that, uh, maybe toward the possibility that, uh, uh, no consolidated, but options sale. Uh, and if there's no auction sale, uh, I would say this, 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 uh, doesn't get approved. And we retain everything. And, uh, economy, country.
I, I would totally agree with Gary, and let's just try to move that two thousand eight, put on seal bidding, and if we don't get it, we'll see what we have to put down.
I would agree.
I wanna clarify something else that, uh, on the, that tractor, I want to strike out that reserve value. Uh, that was in the event that it was a double auction sale. Uh, that would be what we, we would be expecting, uh, in sale value, with an auction. So, we straighten that off for any consideration by, uh, and still bids, uh, we'll retain it, ready to accept the B yet. And, uh, that twenty dollars, I need, we start it.
And, and you guys wanna just approve, just, uh, seal bidding that tractor, and let's forget about the rest for the time being until it's straighted out?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
See, all you need is, is Gary.
Uh, I need authorization between, uh, uh, places, still bids.
All right, I'll, I'll take a motion for that.
So.
I got a motion on the floor, I need a second. I need a second. Any more discussion on that? If you have none, all favorites, say aye.
Aye, 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 aye.
Post say name, motion passed.
Just a little follow-up on that, just clarification with the owner's office, once they got to me, um, I paid for seal bids and make sure we're not overrunning any of it, so. You guys can either pass this now or always. Or you can, uh, well, you've been up to date on, uh, social, this, you think. The highway department's staff has sent out yesterday morning to report all over the area that, uh, some, some damage on the road system. Uh, it gets expensive. Uh, we've already got a list of cars that need to be repaired. Uh, the gravel road damage, uh, it's some severe. Uh, there's been some road segments that have been found gone for safety concerns. Uh, I'm asking the public, uh, we need time. Uh, we can't haul material, uh, we attempted it two weeks ago, and I suffered some of the expenses on that, for, uh, our activity of hauling material. What we need is, uh, like a two-week period. So, a lot of the climate to change, uh, we have the roads around a little bit. Uh, it hasn't happened to us, but the neighborhood comes to the north, so it's had road majors, big fucking road cops attempting to exhumes. Uh, there are many, many reasons for a bother, uh, other than, uh, the time. I'm asking the public to limit, uh, your use of any equipment on the roadway. Uh, I recognize the fact that, uh, they have proved, but, uh, be selective. Uh, reconsider the road system. And we'll get through this. I, I talked with, uh, and I've talked with, uh, with the Transportation Assistance Program. Uh, that's a subdivision of the D O P, South Dakota D O P, that's, uh, based out of, uh, based out of rankings, school warnings. Uh, you guys have probably met and visited with Greg Bauer. Uh, I called him just to inform him that our infrastructure is severely damaged. Uh, his comment was that, uh, the, uh, from brown county to west. Uh, including personal duty are suffering the same situation. Uh, it's gonna take time. Uh, we're considering some avenues of approaches. Uh, we can't authorize equipment, uh, trailers, uh, become some of the road damage, uh, we can't afford. Uh, the other day, we physically locked our E S on, and those were, I think, about seven miles on the gravel road, just to make it available for Calma County's rental and use of a renovation. Uh, close to our, the Calma County line, we couldn't haul it. And, uh, it's, it's a crazy condition. Uh, yesterday, there was, uh, a report of a semi truck, uh, stuck, uh, improved, improved section line that we planned once a year. And the guy had no reason to be there. Uh, he got stuck, uh, the tow truck came up, uh, the tow truck couldn't get to him. Uh, it appears in conversation, he was trying to avoid, uh, the over-bass truck for North Dakota. Uh, his destination was Napoleon, North Dakota. Uh, best route to Napoleon, North Dakota is Highway eighty-three. So, there's, I, I've been real selective about making bad comments. Uh, I'm gonna maintain that standard, believe, uh, believe the fact that the highway department staff likes to provide protection. Uh, if they're all fixed in a spot, and, 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 uh, with some base of marginal, probably good enough for what is vehicle traffic. Uh, one truck comes through, uh, hard off, it left the site, and it's in the same condition it was when they started. Uh, the staff can be, can be moralized real quickly. The county commission, uh, a while back, and this is for the better public. Consider, uh, when, when you drive down the asphalt roads in your personal pickup vehicle, and it feels like the bracelet on, uh, the surface may not be damaged yet. But, uh, you can feel it, the light vehicle, and know what's gonna take, really enough to have a problem with, uh, heavier vehicle to cause the surface damage. And once the surface damage occurs, the subbase damage comes forward, and ultimately, we have an asphalt road that's gonna be destroyed. And once the surface damage occurs, the subbase damage comes forward, and ultimately, we have an asphalt road that's going to break. We, uh, we have done the, I think there were one of these Wednesday of last week, or Tuesday of last week. Uh, determining that, uh, do we have to regulate? There is anybody, employees in the highway department or county commissioners that wants to impose regulations. Uh, we're expecting the public to do that for us. So, uh, if we're seeing factors like, uh, it's out of control, and we get forced to regulate, uh, there is that conversations about, uh, no correction at all. Uh, the conversation was held with them. Uh, it was agreed upon that maybe we have to go there. Uh, prior to putting the notice on the corner of the store on Wednesday morning to provide, uh, the clear, uh, situation for a special meeting, uh, we discussed it again, and we thought, geez, we're probably going too far. Because what is a truck? Uh, and wondering if that poses a question to Terry, what's a truck? Uh, if it's got tools, it's a truck. That means UPS, that means the bomb delivery unit, uh, that means anyone can pick up or large here that has tools. Uh, then there was some deception about deceptive companies that were like, they fly outside tires off, my goodness, um, I can drive it. And I went through more than a single action unit in the building, and it couldn't have been any shorter. Uh, so we're kind of, uh, we're kind of in a tough situation.
Any questions? I got a question, I guess. I know, I know it's going to be tough to try to put restrictions on, but is there some areas that should be very much, I mean, I guess to me it's common sense, but to where a semi should not be going? I mean, to me, the public's got to figure that out themselves, and I guess maybe I shouldn't be going down that road, semi, it's already broke up. You, that's what I'm asking, you're not thinking of, or are you thinking of sometime saying that? I'm just going to use for example, a six car, no semis, I'm just saying that, I'm just using that for example. Is that going to come to that if this doesn't? Or should I say could it?
Most of the drugs, it, yeah. Uh, I think we, I think it could come to that very easily if we know the roads are getting torn up. Because if, uh, people are just not caring or in a hurry. I, I'm thinking that we have to, as a commission, we might have to post some programs. But. My thing with the past farmers, I know spreading is starting now. There's going to be under spreading, try to lighten your load a little bit. Uh, if at all possible, try to stay on state highways. State highways, like right now, by July one, they're available half a load, or a full load semi. Try to lighten some loads, and if you have to make a few extra trips.
To me, I guess the bottom line is, it's going to cross each, every one tax payers, it's not just one guy, it's going to be all of us. So, to me, I'm just hoping that the public does look at this a little serious.
Just like we did last year when harvest finally tried to make some adjustments, like trucks and stuff. Loads on the roads, but just try to be sensible about it, lighten your loads if you can, and hopefully we don't have to come to, to restricting trucks on roads.
Yes, sir.
I'm glad with, uh, Gary, a couple of expenses on, and I'll, I'm calling myself on urgency calls and stuff, and I, I'm seeing the damage. I, I agree with Gary one hundred percent. Um, I agree with what Kevin's saying. I mean, everybody needs to do the diligence, and we're all in this together, and a lot of better terms, and ways, and meaning to, uh, everybody does. I mean, no one wants to pay more taxes to, I mean, we're having, we're having issues now, and we're going to have trouble paying for them now. And it's going to take more dollars if they wreck worse. So, I mean, it's a, I mean, it's got to be a strong, I mean, the public, you know, Kevin said, Gary, or Scott, or Jim, and, uh, Davis, Gary. They're really going to use common sense on this, you know, I mean, if they just don't, they know what roads are damaged, both their, whether they can haul, they'll have, you know, sustain a heavy load or whatnot. Like, the loads up a little bit, like Kevin said, you know, how, you know, it's going to be, it's more trips, but, uh, it's a lighter load, you know, and, uh, if everybody's in this together, we just got to use common sense on it, or, you know, make that clear with the public right now, um, before you guys, like, eventually, yeah, this one may have to act on some of them closing, if they think that, you know, like Kevin said, it, it may, it very well can happen. It can happen tomorrow. You know, and, and Gary needs that, uh, that guidance, and I, I told him on emergency situation, I think he's got that part, I did tell him that. Um, it can, it's, it's always a great responsibility for those loads. So, um, be in an emergency situation.
Well, we currently have a number of roads that probably already are closed because the damage is so bad, you can't even control. I mean, unfortunately, if people are going to use more common sense here and start going with a little bit more, uh, uh, lighter loads or whatever, and we blow these roads apart, we're going to end up closing on roads no matter whether we want to or not, because you just absolutely can't, it's true. For someone, it's already out. I know we've got, we've got a number of roads north to Gomberi up there that are already closed due to the damage, so. I just go along with Gary there, that people need to use a little common sense, and hopefully we get through this, I'm, I'm hoping this weathered stuff, frost will come out, maybe in a couple of weeks, we can, we can see that roads firm up. Right now, if we use common sense, maybe we can get along with it.
There is, uh, there's going to be an ad campaign coming, uh, moving, there being, uh, a host of pictures are going to be provided, uh, some map details are going to be made, published in the paper, uh, comments. Uh. Probably shouldn't have been done prior to this, but, uh, we need support.
Jim Davis, you got anything to say?
I would agree with Gary, uh, you know, the locals can lighten the load, it, it, it's the people that are all across the end of it, and once they're committed on that road. You know, if somebody says, let's just say, serves on a second roof with a load of semi, or even a, even a six ton load. You get down there, you realize, you end up being there, but there is nowhere else you can go, so, uh, I don't know, and I, I've thought something about putting lighter loads on it, so, and even on the gravel road, but I don't know what the answer is right now, we, we, we're, like I say, we're, we're kind of behind the eight ball now. We shouldn't have been thinking about this a month or six weeks ago.
Davis?
Um, I think I think you're going to, yeah, lighter hauls.
Well, to me, I guess pretty much what this is, I'm pretty sure it's, it's a plea to the, to the public to start using, start thinking a little bit, I mean, what's really necessary and what's not. So you don't force us into doing something that we really don't want to do.
If, if there was extenuating emergency service, uh, uh, situations, I think there was one hands where, uh, somebody would get water in the basement. And, uh, that's any different, uh, to the effect that, uh, you, you still don't have to bring in a lot of weight, but you need to get a back on that or something, offload it. You have to offload, uh, the intimidation approach on the state highway and drive it in, common sense, so. I did provide the county commission, uh, an option to provide material on temporary access equal. And, uh, you guys have that, I believe, Jim Davis, you got that nailed up? I haven't since we can't haul material, uh, to these ready situations where lake elevations are coming up, and it's always better if you have a head of a lake, you park one. So it would be in a position where we've got all the turn around, now I look right adjacent to the project. Is that what you have, is what was drafted by me and provided to one of the local residents? Uh, and the part that I need the county commissioners to recognize is that we're offering a dollar forty cents for cubic yards, uh, based on load counts. And, uh, those kind of situations are, we wrote on a pound of truck, we only all can give you yards on a, on a pound of truck. That would be the only basis of, uh, calculating payment. On the second page, you'll see where the, the, the landlord can, or donation, or the landlord can re reimburse for participation that's stated within. Uh, you guys have to recognize that the county board that this would be a program to anybody that we can fill material, uh, for the purpose of ready raises or whatever that is that we need. I need your opinion, Mr. Commissioner.
I agree with your options, like materials and, uh, ways to roll up here.
Ultimately, when we
I think it looks good.
Ultimately, we would like to see the donation box checked in all circumstances, but as indicated, landlord's have rights, and, uh, most dependent for reimbursement, so.
I think it looks good.
Yeah, because who is going to benefit, it's going to benefit that adjacent landlord. So, I agree with Gary, I would like to see that donation box checked every time.
Just recognize that being a member. That's it for me, most serious question.
Look. Just a question though. Is the guy you, uh, in some of the areas, would a guy, would it do any good to, like, some of the areas that are bad, maybe suggest to the people, or just hopefully this video here. There's certain areas that are way worse than others, no question about that, I'm just wondering, are we hoping that those people are watching?
That's what the intent goes on this, and that's what I asked the last thing to get the information on A S A P. Uh. It's a disaster. Uh, I maintain that I've actually, uh, stopped people from making derogatory comments about their neighbor that may have done the damage. It doesn't matter, uh, we're in the middle of it, uh, pointing fingers isn't going to help. Uh, and the bottom line is that, uh, I've been really nice, and subject to, probably shouldn't have been weird. But it doesn't matter, anybody, especially if you're out making arrangements with landlords, that, uh, uh, it would really help once out, or we could get material right off your props if you want to fix this. Uh, that, so the bottom line is, uh, the approach has been nice. And, uh, hopefully the repayment from the A S A P is participation and support itself. One more question, if you got any, just in order to take, uh, show them, uh, the road damage, if you have something going on in this area, would you mind, like, if you wanted to look at? Like I said, Kevin, this is, uh, there's, yeah, media books come out of this. Uh, once that gets to the paper, uh, the general public is going to see the impact. Uh, maybe they don't drive around the whole county and think it's just by roads. Uh, that's a true reference that, uh, just probably.
Thank you, Gary.
Yep.
Thank you. Consider votes to approve rate, uh, sixteen forty-five, Martin Landis, and the last one, a heavy, hot river, sixty-four five. Can I get a motion on the floor, I need a second?
I'll send it back in.
Got a second, any more discussion on that? Here, none, all fair, say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Once we're back. And it's a discussion regarding cash basis.
Well, the motion was made, uh, to start working with those, and then cutting off people over ninety days, and then once they, uh, they got up, then they would be cash basis only. Uh, so, the only people that sort of affected, uh, contact the haulers, because if anybody gets behind on their hill to a framework and cut them off, and then they do get paid up, I don't get them repiling. So, the only ones that's affected are the big haulers. And I just don't see it possible for haulers that are free for trucks coming in a day, bringing hash every night. Knowing how much they're going to, trying to know how much, too much, what it's going to cost, it just doesn't seem to work. We've got my eight haulers, um, one of us, his ninety days has passed right now, but we've been, I've been working with him to get him back, because, um, issues arise that nobody can help. Um, standing rack is at twenty-six thousand, so they will be completely current within eleven, or two. Um, and then the other one, we don't have any issues, so. I just have to think that if they're taking away the cash basis, that's good.
I guess, is everybody understanding that, Dave, or is it Jim?
I, I have to be candid, it would be immediate, if that's a tool to make sure they stay current. Because some of them have a, you say now, when it's not current, our, our, our union was, if they are not current, they don't deliver to over county anymore until they are current.
But I, I think, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm, I think her comment is, on the, on the cash basis, if do we really want one of those big haulers as an example, if they're, if they get themselves back to current status? Yeah, if they're not current, then they're not, she cuts them off. But if they get back to current status, do we really want that kind of cash coming into the landfill? Every time they bring a load? I mean, if we're talking cash basis?
Yeah, they're, they're ninety days, they're cut off. They, they don't pay stuff. And we haven't had it. We, like I said, we've got one hauler, they dump one load a week for that.
In my mind, cash basis is also mean a check. I don't mean they don't have, they don't have to bring up six hundred forty-three thousand and twenty-eight cents to dump that load or whatever it might be. But a check accounted with that load before they dump, would in my mind would, would still qualify as cash basis.
But I guess, I, what I'm wondering is if somebody is current, we I mean, if they're over, over that period, they're going to be cut off. So if they're under it and they've done it once, we automatically put them in that category where if they're not going to be on cash, that's how I'm taking it. Then they'd be, no matter if they're, they don't ever do it again, but yet they're still going to be on cash basis. I, I think that's what I was.
That's what I would say until, until it's such a time they come back to the board or whatever and, and request the county and have them, have them fill on a new landfill use agreement. I understand that we're supposed to.
There's supposed to be an agreement that's signed for each haul, anybody that hauls into the landfill?
That's why I understand that's the way it was set up. Back when Jerry was landfill supervisor and everyone had a landfill use agreement.
I can research that.
But I mean, if Ryan took that away, I guess then how would anybody else know it?
Well, yeah, I don't know that the commission doesn't have, but I think that's something we need to look into.
I mean, I, I understand that, but I'm just saying that if it wasn't there, I mean, if, let's just say Ryan took it, we have obviously or Penny, who knows? But I mean, if it's not there, I already may know that they did it unless Perry was involved, but if Penny could have taken it away, any of Ryan and just decided to go away from that program, I mean.
I can research that.
I think, I think it's something like that he says needs to be looked into. But, you know, I don't, I don't feel bad for these operators that can't pay the bills. If I, if I go to an equipment operator outfit in what features anyway, then buy equipment, they'll pay for it. It ain't long till you're on cash basis and you're on that cash basis for a long time. So if, if cash basis, I, I would consider a check would be the same as cash. Before they unload it.
I guess my, my thought on this is we made this determination. We thought the department head being here, we allow all the other department heads to make their decisions when it happens. As long as they're in, everything's known. Standing rock has run from a hundred sixty thousand down to twenty-five thousand. And they're getting caught up with, I suggest we leave it up to the department head to run its way, but that department head is so deemed necessary.
Do you honestly think, Kevin, that if you're on the way they're at right now, we wouldn't have done this? There is no way in my mind they've ever brought back current until we meet them. Because they haven't been in current since I've been on the board in five years.
Oh, I agree. I'm the same with you, but they also have the big demonstration up there that that's what throws them to the recent thing.
Yeah, well, we can all have excuses. They still get paid every, every month. For all the garbage. It's just that we, they have to have us as their banker and it'd still be that way if we would not have passed that resolution for those motions, we would still be their banker. And now we've kind of ended that problem. And it would never have happened if we wouldn't have took the steps we did back in July second.
Well, I think there definitely needs to be some things looked into. I mean, if that's what's supposed to be is a contract signed, I mean, you know, if that's what everybody.
Well, yeah, but I don't, I don't know if that has anything to do with, with the, the topic that's on our agenda today.
Oh, you don't think you, you would have, that would be in there that if you are this late here and there, I wouldn't know why you stepped.
Why, I doubt it. That was in there. I think that was just an agreement to set up an account to, to you know, like, like several, if they rarely got one list, so got implements, got an account, you know? I think that's just an account. But I, I would, I would suggest we leave it the way it is and look into the landfill use agreement. The original one that, and determine whether we think we even need them anymore.
I guess I don't know what you need, who need what anymore. I guess I don't know what you mean.
If, if we still need the landfill use agreement that, that everyone was supposed to sign when they, when we first first got, or built the landfill back in the, whenever it was in the U S or whatever.
If there were landfill use agreement signed at that time, then those should probably be followed. So we should probably find that out before the motion was made to report to cash basis, because it would probably fill out in there what.
Let, let, let's, let's look, research it and find out what them, those agreements said in the name and let's go from there.
Davis is up. What do you think?
I agree with Jim. Find out what's going on.
So which one's out of least agreements? What's every end of it? Do they bring some trash out too?
I don't know that. I was on the board back then. That's why, that's why we said we should research it and find out what, what they said and what, what all it nailed in.
I think we just gotta do the research on it. Well, I, I, I think that's what we need to do is, is see if there's an agreement has been done. Not been, it looks like it shouldn't be done and those stipulations, whatever stipulations a guy should put in them. And I guess that's what needs to be done. Would you agree with that?
Yeah.
What did you say, Davis?
Yes.
Anything else, Mike? Okay, I put this number twenty-three on there, discussion regarding Easter Monday. I know, Jim, I know we made a motion on that and stuff, but I think we should really pick that over. I know Campbell County, I'm just using that county for example. I don't, I haven't looked at any other county. Campbell County shows not to, even though the state is doing that. I, I, I'll be honest, since I think, I believe we're on this rotation, I, I think that we, we should really reconsider giving that Easter Monday off. Because to be totally honest with you, for some, some departments just having three days of work a week, you aren't going to get much accomplished. I'm not pointing no finger at nobody, but I'm just looking at the whole picture of this. I think we should really reconsider Easter Monday.
We're going to do that, we better, we better, we ready our policy.
I, I think we should look at all circumstances, what's going on.
I guess I would, if Jerry is not there yet, I guess I would question whether we can even do that. That isn't our personnel policy.
But Easter, Easter Monday is not listed as a holiday in our policy.
But it is according to the state. Is, is that not what Chris Newell gave everyone, all the state workers, good Friday, Easter Monday off? Right?
But I don't think it says.
Our personnel, what's that?
I don't think it says that we have to follow it.
I don't have my rights in front of me. I don't know just where it's at.
I can, I can tell you exactly how it says, this is, this is how it says it with Campbell County. Then I guess Campbell County is breaking the law. Uh, the, the close on, on mid Friday for the Easter holiday and to not follow the government's closing on Easter Monday.
I don't know what Campbell County's personnel policy says. I don't think it's breaking the law if, if your personnel policy does not say you're going to follow the state.
What's the rest of the commission feel? Davis, how do you look at it? I know when we had our meeting, I brought, Jamie was there when I said it, he didn't say that, no. He said, I was going to bring it up about the closing of Easter Monday. I'm just looking it up a little bit, so it'll just take a few minutes.
Yes, my, my thought is the government is going to close down offices. We still have our offices. I don't know if the state's going to, anyway, so. We need to get some work done out here. The one that's going to affect is going to be the highway. They're going to work total six days to two weeks. Home conditions with hard, I think we need to get some work done.
I'll, I'll just break it up, Jim, and then talk about we need to redo something in our policy and there's no question about that. And we, we should really look at that hard, because I don't know how anybody in their right mind can actually think that fair. I understand if you are working that holiday, I totally understand, good Friday. But I'll be damned if I'm going to understand how you can actually take that Thursday off, because you, if you're on a five day work week, I mean, that's fine, then you should. But when you're on a four day work week and you're not even working on all these, how is that, how is that right to take that Thursday off your holiday?
They still have, they, they still want their hours in.
Okay, I got it. Hours? Thursday is a holiday, so they'll, they'll be Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, they're going to work and that's it. They're going to have Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday off and Monday if we issue that. And then come next week, they'll work Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, three days. We ain't going to accomplish much in two weeks in our conditions out there. I really honestly believe we should really think long and hard about this.
But they're still going to have, they're going to still put in the same hours everyone else the county is.
Hours is one thing. If you're talking about days, they're going to work two days or three days anyway.
It doesn't make any difference to me whether they put in thirty hours in or thirty-two hours in, three days or in, four days or whatever. Maybe if all worked out in three days in, then they put in four days. I don't, I haven't found it in the, in the policy book, but.
Seven to twelve says holidays. This is county recognizing and observing following state holidays for employees. Good Friday is listed on there. And down below it says, and all other days proclaimed as legal non-working holidays by the President of the U.S. or the Governor of South Dakota. I don't know what a legal non-working holiday would fall under, but I don't, uh. Says good Friday. Doesn't say anything about the Monday after the Friday. Legal non-working holiday.
If a holiday recognized by the county called on an employee, gradually to get your city off, an employee will be granted another day within the same work week. Write our policy book. So whether right or wrong, I don't think we have patented it to change it. Ever tried to change our policy book before Friday, before Thursday.
What are you considering a holiday that's not on the list?
That's what, that's what the governor is, and that's what we've obviously do by what the, what the governor takes.
That's not a legal non-working holiday. I agree we should go with what Campbell County is doing and say you're not going to do that, because it doesn't fall under. My opinion, it doesn't fall under a legal non-working holiday.
What do you think of it, Davis?
I don't know. When you read the policy, you're like, who are you?
I don't believe for a minute that we have to follow what the governor says.
Guys, we did the math, but we, some would, we went with the same test. But as far as the making, how are they just because of this, letters next to them? I have to show you our policy book that we're going to do the same as the state and that's what we've always done before.
What's Commissioner R. do? Can I say your own day? I, I just think we need to look at the whole picture with that. I don't know.
Dave, look at the whole picture. We're getting half of the people off of your court office anyway. Let's get some work done. It's only one more day, two weeks, so let's get some work done.
How do you look at it, Aaron?
I, I agree. I mean, it just doesn't seem like the, the days be hard to match up, especially with the four day work week, you know, the, the high revenue person won't have four day pulls on and the the, the change because of the way things are set. But according to what I'm reading here, under holidays, it does say we have a list of all the holidays in the handbook. And it does say on here that and all other days proclaimed as legal non-working holidays by the President of the United States or the Governor. And it does say on here that, and all other days proclaimed as legal non-working holidays by the President of the United States or Governor of South Dakota. So unfortunately, based on what I see here, and obviously we had a legal counsel, but I, seeing we've got this and we agreed to this personnel policy, I find it hard to believe that, I agree with Jim, I don't know how you can go the other direction. But... As much as I want to say no, that's good work.
They asked me to try to roll, but that's, that's what our policy is.
Well, another thing, I hope the people are watching this, but I don't know, how stupid our policy is and what we're putting here in, because...
We're the ones that passed it, so we're, your policy, you've been stupid then.
You sure as hell better change it then.
This is not the first time it's come up, it's come up every year since I've been on this board.
And I would say that we better have, we better have a meeting sometime where we have some changes in our policy, in our personnel policy. It ain't fair.
You're talking fair if you think it's fair to give half of that courthouse people time off, a week off, and not the highway department?
Reason why, how I'm looking at, and I hope that most of the people are looking at it that way, is because these people here are in, they're amongst each other at all times. Them, them guys are out-
I fully agree with what we're talking about there.
But I mean, we're talking, this guy is out in a road grader or driving a truck, I, I don't, I don't think we're talking the same thing. I, I don't, I don't, I don't think I could put it in whether it's fair or unfair. I don't think that it has anything to do with it, I don't, I don't think the people that sit on top of each other are gonna pay you a gravel truck for anything. I guess we're talking two different athletes.
Well, anyway, we just won the roll.
We're running one. Uh, old business.
And so we're gonna, we're gonna, uh, talk through, well, yeah. Uh, yeah, for a provisional increase of fifty cents back to April 12th. I'll need a motion for that.
I guess my, you have, uh, actually, salary for it, I wish, again, we, well, I said the original, the original, the hiring wage, and there's the probation, the certification increase, those are all we've got here. So, that's where the two replacements are at, it depends on when your benefits are created, if you get a raise of one, half percent, two percent, three percent, so. I guess I don't know. Just first, I hope you don't park with me on whatever. All right, we got him, it's, it's, we're all back. So it's complete, it's, uh, it's gonna be three months probation.
I would do it.
Hey, I got a motion on the floor, I need a second.
I'll second it.
I'll second it. Any more discussion on that?
I'm having a problem, I don't have a district to say, I prefer, I see that, heavy law record is coming. I thought we did, Kevin, sorry, I was saying, I wasn't working enough, I might have lost, but, oh, there, there's an issue, we didn't, we, I, I thought it was gone, so, I'll check in and make sure that we put it down.
Any other discussion on that? Here's our office, say aye.
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 Hey, wait a minute. Hey, you know, go to old business. This old business actually be of conditional use.
I have, um, recalled, major phone call, I think, the problem, not the cell. Um, they can't, they are too far along in their process, it's not the cost of whatever happened even with it, they're too far along in their planning process to do that. So then I called John. Wait, wait, this is conditional use permit, you were talking about the very interest.
Talking about the dollar jet.
The dollar jet, very interest.
Yes.
I thought we were getting conditional use for that, we're in the hop, like, permissioners, here. Permissioners, that much you guys discuss. So. I just want to clarify, I was over the other end, you guys are addressing conditional use permit for hoffins, now as commissioners.
That's what we got for vote on, that is, we did it for justice, we brought it to the end of this, that's a mission. We're, yeah, we voted on board of, uh, as commissioners for the commissioners for property.
That's what the, that is, not the various.
Great. That's why I think we need to, instead of being old business, I think this needs to be as a, a line item that we have to begin with for conditional use. As the commissioner, you're gonna vote on and get approval of that conditional use for hoffins, because we approved it by a binding zoning. So, or now we have to authorize the commission. That everything is passed and obtained. So, going back to the conditional use permit for the commissioners, I don't know that we need a motion, but I think probably just to make it clear, uh, I, yeah. I would say that, I would make a motion that the commissioners would approve the conditional use permit with all of the, uh, filings and everything else that's been approved. And, uh, so hoffins can proceed. Everything, everything has been, uh, under the conditional use. Yes.
You making an argument to a motion?
Yeah.
I think that's one thing, let's go, and a second, any more discussion? You guys hear all that, Jim, Davis?
Yep, what you're doing, I did.
Yeah, I did.
There's what?
Yeah.
Here about, uh, no call, Kevin?
Yes.
Marion? Yes. Jim?
Yep.
Davis?
Yes.
Stop, yes. Close this out. Now we can go to old business. Ready, uh... You've got that, yes. Does anybody have anything, old business? New business? Yes.
I have two things, um, there's this equalization term, and, uh, it's the same thing, it goes up against, they have until the last year, so sorry. So I think that we can handle what we have to do for, um, county equalization part on the twenty-first, because it will just be to, um, approve, like, freezes and veterans. And, uh, planning lines, we actually, that's got, we have to, so right now, it looks like that will be, anything related to equalization. So I just want to, so, one, second.
You got it, Drew? James, Davis, you agree with that?
Yep. Yep. Yep.
Then the other is, we have to, um, we're just, kind of, very, it's the dollar, so, as I explained, they're, they're engineers, that they're too far into the process to change the size and everything, all that. But, you know. But, and it wasn't the cost of buying, uh, that, it was the, uh, the cost that we had to change the engineering survey and all that. So then I called, uh, the city attorney. And now scale, but there was anybody that the city could annex that piece of land without that property. He had already checked into it. And it, it is okay, the city annexed that, with what we call a meats and boughs description. Which is like, because it's in the corner of a quarter, so, so many people are, like, for so many people, that's a meats and boughs description. So that is apparently what's going to happen, we don't have a public hearing at all. The variance completely disappears off, all this place points to the same.
No, you watch.
I'm gonna try and get it canceled, if I can, then it just goes to the skin for next decade, it has to.
We're not, cause for, 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 can't get it, I'm not, I'm trying. I don't think we got nothing.
No.
Should pull that, not follow the reason.
In, yes, it will, it can, it can, you're right.
I, I guess, I don't know, I'm just kind of lost right there, I don't understand how we, we've got those zoning next stuff, and all of a sudden, it's got the finger of that. That, one and a half acre property that disappears and that, they don't have, I don't know, you know, but, except for, I don't know.
Well, if I'm understanding it correctly, what's happening here is the city is going to annex that one point five acres into their jurisdiction. And therefore, once that's annexed into their jurisdiction, it's no longer county controlled ordinance. So therefore, uh, we would have no say in the two acre, uh, we would have no say in having a new variance or anything like that, because it's been an extension of the, in the city. Uh, we would have no say in having the new variance or anything like that because it's been annexed into the, into the city.
But and done with a straight council, that's why I just want to understand how it makes it automatically, despite that how this should, it should follow us. You know what I'm obviously just saying?
The county's the one that are proving anything, so it's not being done by us. I don't think that's what you're saying.
It's not what I'm saying. I'm just saying that it looks like them that everybody can just say, stop. If you're close to the state limit, so you're, you have the guys' rules, don't follow us. But
The only, the thing that makes this one, you know, really different than just any other one is that in order for the city to annex something, it has to be adjacent to your existing city. So you couldn't go up and have a while and then ask the city to annex, you get out of common zone. But this one happens to be right, right north of the city. Right. Anyways, you guys, that's what I thought.
It's off the rock, wait.
I very much remember that. I just don't know if that's right.
But I'm getting a lot of your thing.
And I, and I do not know what the city will require on its own heart. If the city has to have some community fund now or not, that I don't, I don't
I think it should, it should look some covered here.
I guess that that really, that you would like
and if it's not following, I'm saying it's possible, but it should be a little covered here.
Yeah, I, I, I'm looking at the point where if the city has the ability to annex that property in legally, um, and that's a route that they can go to do that, I would say that that's maybe that, I have no idea what kind of jurisdiction. It seems like this would happen beforehand, before it came to us, we wouldn't even be talking about it. Uh, if it's a legal process that you're doing.
Well, I think it should have been through a law before this.
I, I don't disagree with that. I'm just, I'm just saying, and I understand what you're saying, what, what part of this whole thing seems like it's a little bit out of line, but if the city is able to do that and they're annexing this property into it and it's all legal, then like Kevin says, we're, we're out of the picture. It's nothing, we have nothing to do with it because it's not, it's not more counting property.
It would have been better.
Still it.
It would have been better if the state had given, um, talk, talk to us more, you know what I mean? So that we, we could have had this figured out before it ever came to this. But remember, I called their attorney.
Me, we should be creating this just the way it is.
We need to know the city.
Me, that, that's how it can be, that's my opinion. I, I, I just because we were looking at this, no matter what, this, this was going to be in front of us. They wanted that variance and that's how we followed. It's, we gotta, we gotta have a hearing. Find out, I, I don't understand why, how it's just going to be there. Look, if, if Deb wouldn't be doing all the labor on this, we would be saying, because we don't have a here. But I, I don't understand why, well, we should have our person hearing that, that should have been their problem. It should have been the city's problem, but when it's in our hands, by God, if it, if a public hearing asked to do it, then it should be. And the public should be involved there. They should have figured that out before we got there. Well, I think I look at
concerning that is that they are not interested in buying another half acre. So if we didn't know the separate part of this, we then would still be having the public carry on variance for a big undersized because they are not interested in buying, trying to buy another
Yeah, I'm just going to throw this out because I'm going to use the comment that Jim uses sometime. I think it's cart before the horse. And by God, all the general should have thought, hey, I'm going hard about this. They can, and they're automatically, this is going to pass. By God, then it should go to the public. The public should be determined. Yeah, me, like I said, if Deb wouldn't have taken some work on that, where she's spending her time, when it should have been all in general. Whoever their attorney is, they're the ones that should have figured it out, not them. So I believe that you should follow rip back on this. You should have that, that hearing nonstop, whatever it's going to cost, it goes to them. They should have figured this out beforehand. Not now. They stayed, they were presented today. That's exactly, I don't know how you guys are looking at it, but like Kevin, I mean, it's off our hands, but just, no. My God. That's how I look at it. I mean, we can, we can say, well, that's not our problem anymore. It was our problem.
Yeah.
Yes.
Can you, can you clarify for me, the reason we have to have this variance? The original reason was because they needed a legal description to annex that land again, right?
Right, that's what, they, they came to us with the plot and it was outside city limits. So, you know, when they first talked to us about it, um, I know that Greg told them to go to the county website and look at the ordinance. But then when finally when the plot, and that was quite a while ago, when finally when the plot came through, it was only like one point four nine acres, not quite an acre right now. And so then Greg informed them that they had to do a variance. Um, and because we have a minimum acreage of two acres. So then we started all the variance stuff and then came up, well, if you guys approve that, maybe the city will approve it, we agreed, and then they'll start construction. So all that was sometimes kind of after they sent the plot and we got started in the process. So then it's like, well, they must need that plot, you know, like with three dollars general, maybe they'll sell this. So, yeah.
You would think so.
Yeah.
I, I guess, I, I, I would have been, I probably don't see the process of, I, I
I would agree with God, if, if, let's not start bending the rules, sort of speaking.
That's right. I, to me, they're the ones that did this, not us. And by us just saying, well, they're not a problem anymore, I don't believe for a second. That's right. They should have had this all figured out beforehand.
You're right.
With, with Absolutely not. There's hundreds of them throughout, out, by thousands of them. By God, and they should have, they should have done this really when they were doing this, testing everything. I guess. I don't, you guys are, I'm going on, yes, sir.
I'm just curious if now that it's up against the city attorney, if they know we're going to go through the public hearing, if they still do this, for a while.
Well, to me, we got, we're doing what we should be doing. And we're going forward with it and that's that. As you guys say differently, yes, Marion?
I, that, that was just in, you basically asked the same question. I was going to, I, I agree, if, if best case, believe it on the county and we do the, we do the variance hearing or anything else. But based on the information that's come to light here, if they go to the city and the city annexes this property into, oh, oh, Salby before we have that public hearing, then, then it just gets removed from our plate.
I would say, how? Say what you want.
I mean, how, how does the, how does the
Why, why wouldn't they have known that beforehand?
I, I know. I was just saying, if the city has that much power and control to annex property into their deal though, and they can actually do that legally based on the connection and everything else, if they go that route and they annex that into their, what, what are we, what are we going to be able to do to stop it?
We haven't signed it. To me, it's going to go through the process. We have not signed that yet. Is it, is it in the, in the city? Okay, I feel, I know Jamie's not here, but it, it can't be, we didn't go
But if the city annexes it into that property and becomes a problem, then we have no hope on it.
Yeah, but I think they have to have the legal description to do that. That's, that's the shady area. Until we have this variance, we can't give them a legal description. If they annex it, you know, if they're owning it, it's a legal description, but I think technically by their rules, they have to have a legal description to annex it. The way I, and I'm not in the dirty and, and I'm way out of my comfort zone here, but I, I, I agree with God. I think we have to have our variance and, and, uh, they have to, uh, we have to give them a legal description before they can, before they can annex that in.
If they do it in Meads and Robbins before we have our variance, then we, that's a bridge we cross then, or this leave is in place.
I just, yeah, but I think we should too. I mean, I, I don't know how to look at it. To me, I'm on probably, probably way out. I think they're the ones that put us in this permissionment, and by God, they're going to follow through with it.
It's going to be advertised, so it's in place, or is it leaving that right there?
Davis, Jim?
Yeah, I, I fully agree. Agree.
That's fine, I agree with her. I don't care which way.
I just, I just think you're going to expand it in the right way. You just have been in all these, all these rules.
So I'm just going to leave it, advertise the way we got it in the, in the board adjustment. Organize the advertising, have it there and we'll just take it from there.
Just call God back and tell him.
I guess that, then we, next is
Oh, no worries, Father. How many, hold this round?
I will, that's why
We're going to make care of it this
We did not have a motion to, to advertise in the spirit, we need to see what that found out. So you guys do not have a motion on their advertising.
Uh, I got one more thing. Is there anybody else, anything on the new business? Uh, Davis? I mean, what you talked to me about the other day, did you want to talk about that or not really?
About the
No, 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 property tax.
All about the property and you want to get a call or anything on your law. Take control, lock their limits, force on your tax link, which is out there, you know, penalty
And I, I have to get shorter. And I think if I remember right, I'm, I know the governor, I'm pretty sure she was not wanting that. But, but he, that's how I understood. He was brought up once.
That's always in that, there was discussion about it, when you do
And that's my understanding of how the country's going with the governor and all that. They're not, they're not going to do that. We don't want to open up another can of worms. So if I remember that correctly.
That's how, that's why I'm on just the, uh, that's how I took the conversation, that they didn't want to really go that way right, right then. I don't know. So that's what we know as of right now, Davis.
Okay.
Okay. Any other new business?
No, not yet. Oh, okay.
Okay, Kevin made a motion during our county commission. Need a second?
I'll second.
You need a second? Any other discussion? Here none, all favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, I'm back.
Recumbent under more adjustment.
You're going to recombene under more tiny, more zoning adjustment?
Big portions of the food, advertising, various
Public hearing for yourself, dollar general.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor. I need a second. All sir, I'll second. I'm a second. Any other discussion? Here none, all favor say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Motion passed. Good. And what's on the floor, any second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Now I'll take your Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Davis. Yep.